Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for December 18th, 2019, room 124 at 7:10 PM. Remind everybody this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight we have a couple of public hearings or one public hearing which will continue, which is 144 Secong Street, 15 Lincoln Street, we'll address later, which will be continued. We have some new business, which is a stay for 35 Pine Street, a change of ownership for the project 40B known as the enclave, and we have a few minutes that we'll be reviewing after that. Before we start with the enclave, I'd like to thank Chris Gleason, who has been working for cable for close to 20-plus years and has been a steadfast member of the ZBA team through thick and thin, through snow, through rain, and through sleet. And unlike last evening, Chris, you have to come out tonight, or else I'm gonna have everybody turn off their mics. So you have to come out for a moment, please. I'm sorry to do that to you, but that's life. Come on out, Chris. Come on out. Come on. Come on. This is for Chris on behalf of the ZBA. It says, "Use the microphone." Thank you. Thank you, Chris Gleason, for your use of service to Norfolk zoning board of appeals and the town of Norfolk. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for all your work here.
There you go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's a great microphone.
All right. With that, first, we're gonna have, we're gonna allow Tommy DePlacido to talk to us briefly about a transfer of ownership for the enclave. Tom?
Good evening, Tom DePlacido. For the record here, on behalf of Norfolk Holding LLC, which was the applicant for the enclave in Norfolk, on Village Green, just wanted to notify the board that we're actually transferring ownership of the comprehensive permit and the property to a different LLC. And that's an insubstantial.
I was just testing you to make sure you're on your toes over there last night.
That's a good test, Tom.
Good job. The record, Tom DePlacido, on behalf of Norfolk Holdings LLC. And just here tonight to notify the board of an insubstantial change, of changing the ownership of the property that was permitted for the enclave in Norfolk on Village Green and the comprehensive permit to a newly constituted entity, EE Norfolk LLC, which is still 50% ownership of Norfolk Holding LLC. And the other, the only difference is that I would be the other partner or manager in that LLC. So you'd have a local face that would be ownership of that property and project as well. So that's the difference. It's an insubstantial change because it's still more than 50% ownership of the original applicant and just notifying the board. And would ask the board if they could just make a vote for that, that they were notified, and just a short letter that I can submit to Mass Housing along with that.
Thank you. Dan, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No. This doesn't really require a formal vote, but Attorney Smolak has requested one. I don't see an issue with it, and if it helps with the process of getting approvals from Mass Housing, I don't, I don't see a problem. I think the board should take a pro forma vote just to acknowledge and accept the notice of transfer.
Okay. Good. Any questions from the board? Or, Tom DePlacido? Anybody in the audience has any questions with regard to this change? Okay. What we'll do is after we have the public hearings, we'll, we'll take a vote during our new business section, okay? So that way we can, we can get on with the public hearing. Okay? All right. So at this time, we will continue the public hearing for 144 Secong Street, Lakeland Hills. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What would you like to talk to us about tonight? I think you probably have an update for the traffic study. We're gonna talk a little bit about hydro. I think Sean's gonna, even though he hasn't prepared a formal letter yet, he is going to have some comments on the latest plan that you submitted us with. I think Dan's got some comments as well.
Yes, exactly. That sounds like a plan. Again, everyone, Christopher Agostino, counsel for the applicant. We were last before the board on October 30th, and as the chair mentioned, we identified some areas that the board wanted to see some additional detail and additional data on, enabled, in order to enable the board to evaluate some of the waiver requests that we're applying for in this application and to further evaluate the feasibility of the plan. And those two specific areas that I think we're drilling down on now are with regard to the site entrance and the feasibility of the site entrance as far as intersection site distance and stopping site distance. So we were tasked with collecting more traffic data, and we actually went out and we did engage a vendor to put down the strips to do some monitoring to gather additional data. We also went back and got additional detailed survey info. We pulled some deeds and some plans from the registry relevant to the adjacent properties in order to try to really drill down on where the property lines are along Secong Street because the town records of the public right-of-way are not precise. So in order to confirm where some of those sightlines are, we gathered additional data that we submitted to the board since the last hearing as well. And I know that the board's traffic peer reviewer and the applicant's traffic engineer have been in contact, and we're prepared to have our traffic engineer give a brief synopsis on that aspect of things this evening, and then we can decide where to go from there at the end of the night as far as the details on the entrance. The second issue that I think you alluded to is also the details regarding the proposed wastewater treatment plant and the location of the leaching field. At the last hearing, the board's peer reviewer made a general comment about the proximity of the leaching, the proposed leaching field. Actually, Amy, I'm gonna steal your pointer here, just so. The proposed leaching field for the wastewater treatment plant and this, this stormwater management basin that's proposed down here, that's been referred to as Basin Four. And then just the general interaction of these two facilities were raised generally. Shortly before the last hearing, Steve Smith, who's the applicant's hydrologist, or hydro, what's his title?
Groundwater hydrologist.
Groundwater hydrologist. I always get that one wrong. But Mr. Smith issued a report that was dated October 27th shortly prior to the last hearing, so the board's peer review team, including the board's groundwater hydrologist, didn't have a chance to fully evaluate that report. But essentially, that report took the data that we collected, both from groundwater monitoring wells and additional soil samples, in order to see whether or not, in order to get additional data to properly size and get a feel for how these, these facilities should be designed. As a result of that data, the board's peer reviewer did ask us for more information. Attorney Hill conveyed that request to us, so we actually did some more digging, not some more digging in the field, but digging as far as crunching, crunching the numbers and looking at the grading and the proposed elevations in that area. So we will be able to present more on that tonight. The other issue that was requested and talked about the last hearing was the location of private wells on adjacent properties. So we did go and actually get data from the town that allowed us, thank you, Amy, to identify the location of private wells. And we were also able to get the soil profiles or additional soil data and groundwater data that were associated with these wells when they were permitted and constructed that further allows us to confirm the safety of our proposed wastewater treatment plant in this area. There was a subsequent request that Attorney Hill made regarding this issue, but we can talk about that more when we get into it. So that's a brief overview of where we've been since we last met and what we're prepared to present tonight. I don't think we're going to, we should be able to draw conclusions on certain issues tonight, but there is some technical engineering that I know the board's peer reviewer, both their hydrologist and the general civil, are going to want to see. So maybe at the end of this evening, it might be appropriate to talk about a work session where we can dig into some of those detailed engineering issues, but we can definitely give a good overview of it this evening. So with that, I think I'd like to turn it over, and we can start with the design of the driveway entrance, and I can turn it over to the applicant's traffic engineer, if that's okay with the chair?
That's great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, do you know the, the status of the town surveying the street? Aren't we gonna have that street surveyed to get the exact, so we can actually determine what the sightlines will be coming out of the project? Do you know what that, the status is of that?
We haven't, we haven't heard back yet on that. So we don't know the status yet.
All right. So you think that'll be done before our next hearing? Any idea?
Don't know.
Don't know. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just stand soon. If you can pull it up to the appendix, I'm gonna run through appendix C of that, what I submitted, I believe, the 19th, the team submitted. I'm gonna touch briefly on everything else we collected real quick, because I know the sightlines are, are the main concern, but just wanted to go over the other data we did collect. That'll work for now. That'll work great for now. Thank you. At the, at the conclusion of the, the last time, at least, that I was here, I think that was the October, October 30th meeting, we discussed a number of issues mainly related to sight distance, but we also left the meeting agreeing to collect additional traffic count data, as Attorney Agostino alluded to. So we, we collected that data. We collected new volume data and new speed data along Secong Street at the site. We found volume data was fairly similar. The peak hours were fairly similar within 15, 30 minutes of when they were three years ago, based on our initial data, which, which is fairly logical when you conduct these studies, there are slight shifts. We collected new speed data. That data was similar to, but slightly less than the data that was collected approximately three years ago, which aligns with the fact that there are new signs out there with speed, warning signs and intersection ahead signs. But the, I believe the speeds before were 40 and 41 miles an hour. They were now 36.3 and 38 and a half miles an hour, so approximately eight to 10% lower than they were three years ago for a 35 mile an hour posted speed area. We incorporated that data. We used basically the same processes we had before with our original data. We leveraged the recent count studies that had been, or recent studies and counts that have been done for adjacent developments and performs industry standard intersection analyses, and we received, we obtained basically the same plus or minus one second of vehicular delay, which is an industry metric for those intersections, and they are, they're all still acceptable delays, level of service C in the 2026 build condition, which is a plus seven year condition, which is the Mass DOT standard for the, for these types of studies. We were also asked to evaluate safety near Stop River Road. That was another action item leaving that meeting. We did evaluate that based on the Mass DOT crash portal. There was one crash near Stop River Road on Secong Street. It was 250 feet away and was a property damage only crash, and that was the only crash that was found in the last five years within what I would consider, you know, the proximity of Stop River Road on Secong Street. So those were the sort of other items aside from sight distance that we evaluated after, based on the action items from the October 30th meeting. Most of what we evaluated was, was digging further into the sight distance. We, as, as Chris alluded to, we obtained additional survey information that's more specific, that was based on detailed ground survey. Industries Engineering took on that task, and we utilized the new speeds to, to assess that. So instead of the 40 and 41 mile an hour speeds to inform our sight distances, we used the, the 85th percentile speeds that were collected on the November 5th data collection, and then we evaluated for stopping and intersection sight distance as well as left turn sight distance, I believe. I believe it was Devin that, that had asked about that previously, so we also included that in our analysis for this latest submittal that we submitted in late November. So based on the new survey and the new speeds, we feel confident that for the intersection and the stopping sight distance, if the shrubs and trees are removed that are either within town right-of-way or within the applicant's property, that, you know, if, if those are removed, then we're confident that we have the sight distance we need, both for stopping and intersection sight distance at, at the speeds we measured, which again were 36.3 and 38.5. But we also feel confident that it would meet at the 40 mile an hour threshold, which, which equates to a 305-foot stopping sight distance. We also measured the, the left turn distance required. If you wouldn't mind scrolling down, Amy, I think it's maybe the third of these figures. Yes. So left turn sight distance is calculated using a slightly different formula. I won't go into the exact details. It's somewhat similar to, but it's based on essentially how fat, how far you travel going five and a half seconds on opposing a left turn. So if you're turning southbound into the applicant's property, you're measuring that off of the northbound travel speed, sort of the conflicting movement against a southbound left turn. And for a 35 mile an hour posted speed, which is the, which is the posted speed there, essentially the sightline nearly exactly meets. There's, there's maybe a foot or two to spare for that 35 mile an hour posted speed. Based on the slightly higher prevailing speed, there is a slight, I believe, 26-foot discrepancy that is shown there. Now, the, the guidance, which is the ASHTO referred to, sort of as green book, specifies the, the design speed. Within our industry, there is often debate on what that exactly means. I don't, I don't think we have access to what, whoever designed this road long, long ago, what their design speed was. That often sort of evolves over time. Sometimes it's the posted speed, sometimes it's a slightly different measurement, sometimes it's the 85th percentile speed. But in this case, if you're using the posted speed, the left turn, turning distance is, is met, assuming you can remove shrubbery and foliage from areas within the public right-of-way. There is that slight 26-foot discrepancy. However, there are common mitigation steps that are taken in, in instances like this, and we found instances in the town of Norfolk where those have been employed. For example, if you have a sharp turn with a driveway coming off of it, there is a sign that, that sort of has an arrow with a, with a bar on it. I apologize, I forget the exact name of that sign within the parlance of our industry. I can look it up in a second, but there's also other signs. I'm sure you've seen a sign that's a, says blind driveway ahead. And then there's also mechanisms that have proven to be quite effective called speed feedback signs, and I know the town has also employed some of those. They can be mobile, mounted on a, a trailer with a solar panel. They can be in a fixed position with a solar panel, or they can also be fixed position, you know, hardwired into an existing power supply. But, but numerous studies in our industry have shown that those have been successful at significantly reducing speeds and also reducing the number of people speeding, which would correlate, but, but, you know, depending on how you slice the data, they've been effective in multiple ways at reducing speeds, and there are other places in, in the town where those have been employed. So those are our findings based on the, the latest data, which again was collected on November 5th at the site, included volume and speed data. We analyzed the traffic conditions. They were found to be acceptable based on this new data, just as they were on the data from three years ago. And then based on the sight distances, the intersection and stopping sight distance are met if, if the trees and shrub, either shrubs on the applicant's property or within town right-of-way are removed. And then I discussed the, the left turn sight distance and some of the mitigation steps that are taken to, to do that, to, to mitigate against that very slight discrepancy. If you're taking the 85th percentile speed, if we're using the posted speed, there's, there's really no mitigation needed because it's, it's met.
Got a question? No, we'll get there. All set? Okay. Dan?
Could I ask a question of Mr. Cherry?
Sure.
So Phil, I, one of the things that I'm struggling with is understanding where the boundary is for the right-of-way, because you would agree with me that a sightline should not cross over onto private property. It needs to stay within the right-of-way of, of the road, right?
There's instances when, when that crosses right-of-way. Excuse me. There's instances in which, in which sightlines cross right-of-way. I know there's a, a limit on how close you can, can build in this case. It would be ideal, but I know there's other instances in which sightlines have crossed property.
Private property?
It would be ideal where there's no, there's no buildings, but I guess what I was describing here is that there's shrubbery. All the shrubbery that we're removing is either in the public right-of-way or on the applicant's pride-of-way, right-of-way as of now.
But just for example, on this one, is this dashed line your sightline?
That's hard. Yes, sir.
And what's the, what's this curved line here? Out and outside.
That's the layout. That's the right-of-way.
So that's, so in this example, isn't your sightline outside the limits of the right-of-way?
Yes, it is slightly. And again, this particular one is for a vehicle traveling southbound, taking a left-hand turn into the project entrance. So what, what Phil is saying, just to articulate it, is that currently where it crosses over, there's no vegetation where it crosses over currently. So the issue would be whether a future homeowner or this homeowner, number one, plants foliage that you can't see, or plants trees that you can't see through in that area, and then number two, whether or not that is a critical deficiency enough to imperil health and safety under Chapter 40B that would require us to implement some mitigation measures. Now, we're proposing, I think, number one, because where there currently is not any foliage and you can't build a structure at that location, I think what Phil is saying that generally this would be an acceptable configuration where it currently stands. What we're saying is that we can also propose mitigation measures to reduce the traveled speed on the road, which would involve either a speed feedback device, which has proven to reduce the 85th percentile speed, number one, or install other signage to alert drivers to the fact that there, there is a driveway ahead that they may not see. The other option, and all these things are weighed across, you know, competing interests, is that we could also potentially move the driveway, but that, that implicates other issues where one of the reasons we put the driveway there was to avoid having headlights directly shine into the house that's across the street. So the driveway was placed there to avoid that result in one instance, and where there currently is no foliage in this particular area that is, is applicable to a left-hand turn, again, into the driveway, we figured that by reducing the, the speeds with traffic feedback devices or other, or speed feedback devices or other mitigation measures, this would be an acceptable configuration.
There's also one other factor. In this particular area that the sightline crosses over, we have a public hydrant that's actually dissected by the right-of-way. So there's a hydrant there, Chris.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so there's some question about the surveying. So the lines that you see on this plan are from the subdivision plan that actually lays out those lots. So there's a stone boundary. I, I left my laser pointer here last time. Thank you. There's actually a stone boundary at this location that was located based on the subdivision plan, which I emailed to counsel. That's a recorded plan that shows the extent of this lot, and it, the, the fire hydrant that should be in the right-of-way actually isn't. It's actually on what would be private property. So there's already some overlap there as far as, you know, whether or not that's private property or the, the right-of-way. So we're taking it, it's actually, you'd think the right-of-way would be, you know, if you went and surveyed it, you'd think it would actually be inside that line where the fire hydrant is. We're actually taking the line that puts it right through the fire hydrant, and this is what's shown. So that's what we've evaluated. I, I think where we're at at this point is this is something that, you know, we'll need to get a, a conclusion on as to where the board's traffic peer review engineer thinks he wants to advise the board one way or the other on. And I think, you know, that's something that maybe we could really dig into during a work session where the engineers can sit at the table and say, you know, this works or doesn't work, or whether or not, you know, this is of, of sufficient concern to actually shift the driveway, and that would extend this line further in this direction, which would give drivers traveling this way more time to see a vehicle that's entering from the left here. So we've been through this on our end in detail. We've, we've spent a lot of time gathering the survey information, and, and this is where we've gotten with it. Again, entering and exiting the site, so this diagram is the vehicle turning left into the site. Entering and exiting the site with the data that we've collected, the 85th percentile, all the sightlines are within the right-of-way of the road.
Or if you could, which section sight distance here? Actually, that's a good, that's another example, though, I, that, this also shows overlap, right, onto private property?
That shows, that shows an overlap of available at 390. If you look at the lower one.
This is the required.
That's the required.
It's right here. That's an available. So the reason he's showing this as available is that there's currently no shrubbery. So without any plants being planted, the available sight distance is 390 feet. Yes, that sightline shown as available does cross over that, that turn in the road there. There's actually an existing fire hydrant there, so you'd have to get permission to plant a bush on top of the town's infrastructure, which is a fire hydrant, which is likely not gonna happen. So that's available. This is the required, which as you can see is within the right-of, uh, sorry, clearly within the right-of-way of the road.
Within the paved with.
Within the paved with, either.
Yeah, so it's really hard to see anything over here because it's, you've got a ton of lines, and obviously the screen is blurry, but even with, with what you gave us, it's very hard to see where this line crosses. It's very close to this corner, and so.
Yeah, so that's, that's something I, I think we can present to the board tonight that our survey data shows that line being.
I mean, if you look at it with this view, it does look like it clips the corner.
So it's.
So that's, that's the concern I've, I've raised and that Kim has raised, and Kim and I have discussed this, is that we want to make sure that these sightlines that you're presenting, sorry. No one is immune from soles. We want to make sure that all the sightlines that you're presenting are within the rights-of-way because I, my understanding, and Sean can confirm this, or, or Kim can, is that the rules say the sightlines have to be within the right-of-way or your property because you could control that. The other neighbor over there, I understand the hydrant argument, but it's still their property, and if they want to throw up a line of trees because they think it's necessary to mitigate the impacts from the project, or if they want to put a fence up, they're entitled to do that, and so, and that would, that would eliminate your sightline, and it's nothing that town can do to control that or you. So that's why it's important that all the sightlines stay within either your property or the right-of-way.
Right. So that is the, again, the left turn into the driveway concern, which I think we're proposing. So on this, on this one, your, your concern is about this particular, and we can get a blow-up of that and show that we're.
And there's also this, this property boundary, which I can't tell from this view where it is, but I, I, when I looked at this last.
The other thing, Phil, these are 14 and a half feet back from.
These are 14 and a half feet back, yes.
Okay, so that's another thing, is that this is 14 and a half feet back. When evaluating this, and everybody knows, you, you stop or you slow down 14 and a half feet back, but generally, everybody creeps out a little bit as you get towards the paved width. So under some evaluations in having this discussion, what's the other distance that's used?
10 feet is, is sort of a secondary distance, and that's something that Kim and I have discussed on the phone when we've been. discussed on the phone when we've been looking at iterations of this, is, you know, when we got the data, and I think this was some time ago now when we were waiting on the more detailed survey, but I can't quote his words exactly, but we did talk about, you know, if you can get it at 10 feet, that's often an understood, you know, drivers behave rationally where you stop, and then you proceed a little bit, and then you look. And so 14 and a half feet is a very conservative mark from the pavement.
The reason I raise that is because these sightlines, again, if there's, we can show that 14 and a half feet back, we're okay here. I'm not, I'll throw it out. If there is any interaction, it's de minimis, but I'm told from the survey data and the engineering that there's no conflict there. But what I'm getting at is these are the conservative lines based on 14 and a half feet back. If you go to 10 feet, then you're fine. You're well within the right-of-way, and then as a practical matter, you actually approach the, you know, you keep creeping out, which is why there's a discussion to be had among the design professionals and potentially a member of the board to really drill down on this issue and say one way or the other. If, at the end of the day, the peer reviewer has a serious concern about it, where they're reporting to the board, "Oh, my God, don't do this," then that's something that we need to come back before the board on. I know that Phil, and I've watched the emails, there've been, there's been a lot of back-and-forth. I think at this point, if this remains a concern for the board, that's something that, you know, we need to get in a room with the engineers and hash that out and get a conclusion.
If I may add to it, at a certain point, at a certain distance, if you have a very small occlusion, a vehicle is 20 feet long at minimum, even if there's a one-foot tree in the way, your eyes are going to comprehend that there's a car coming around that. That's, I've done numerous other traffic studies, if there's a utility pole in the way or something like that that has a relatively small diameter, you know, looking at these corners, I can understand a turning hill that this looks close, and we can drill into that, but even if there was any slight encroachment there at one foot, your eyes are going to be able to see a moving vehicle and react accordingly and understand as a driver that that's caution you would need to take.
Okay, and just so we're clear, the issue with the encroaching sightlines, I think, is also on the stopping sight distance plan. Is this the one? I thought we were looking at ISD.
Yeah.
That's, yep, right here. I think this, I think this available stopping sight distance line, is that right?
Yes, if you could zoom in a little bit. I think we're on the page now.
Okay, so.
Did I do it?
Good. So this. That's an issue there with that line crossing, and so stopping sight distance is the one you showed with the left turn sight distance.
So just, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm trying not to interrupt this evening.
It's the holiday season.
It's the holiday season. That's the fire hydrant. It's surveyed right there.
But you know that doesn't matter, right?
I'm pointing it out so that everyone is aware of where this is on the, on the ground, right there.
All right, so where we stand is that Kim also reviewed the other issue that was raised by the butter. I don't know if she's here tonight. She is great, and thank you for doing that. And so there was a question about the appropriateness of the location of the speed tubes. Sure. So actually, Phil, can you tell us where the speed tubes were installed and?
I have, so we use the account vendor. I myself did not physically place those tubes. We hire.
We hire a vendor to record those. They sent us confirmation of where they placed them, and, you know, they have a line, I believe it's in our file here, but that line was right at the property. The line we received was, I was not there to physically see the tubes. There are often times when those tubes are placed where they may be moved slightly based on the.
Could you use them, could you hold off? Thank you.
So let's have Phil talk, and then we'll go to you.
Yeah, okay.
So I made the request to account vendor that we use often all over New England. They've been great to work with. We send them an address to place those tubes. Sometimes they may take slight liberties to place those tubes based on needing to affix them to a post or something, but, you know, I received the comment from Ms. Cullen regarding the location of those tubes. I think you said it was closer to the curve, and you also commented on the weather. I don't know if you'd just like to respond, and I can respond back.
So did you ask the vendor to confirm where they put them? Or did they take a picture of where they were or anything, or?
They sent a Google Map line showing where those were placed, and it was not surveyed to the foot, but it was in this area. And typically, for speed and volume counts, you know, whether you're on one side of this house or that side of this house, typically that has a de minimis bearing on certainly volume and even speed, given that there is a speed reduction sign at this location. It's fairly minimal. And again, we've shown these for 285, but we also, you know, we have available sight distance, and others, other ways shown for the 40 miles an hour, so we've taken that into account as well.
Ms. Cullen, do you want to show us where you saw those up there?
You might have to grab a mic from someone. Chris, could you give her your mic?
Thanks.
So this is the applicant's property?
Yes.
And this is the driveway?
Yeah.
This, I would say it was probably more like right around here.
Really, to be honest with you, it was not in front, it was not within these properties. I mean, we drove past it every day for the two days it was there. I would just say to check it. I think you could see it from your house. Yeah, you could see it.
Where is that type?
So basically, the C-38 is exactly.
Is. One thought I might have is there is a intersection ahead sign with a 35 mile an hour sign. Typically, these tubes are chained and affixed to post-mounted signs, partly so they don't get stolen, honestly, but so they're affixed and they don't move often. I know that sign is almost within 10 or 15 feet across the street from the fire hydrant. Do you believe that's where the sign would have been? Because when I heard it wasn't right at the property line, that was my assumption, is that they found the nearest post that, I've requested dozens and dozens of traffic counts. Sometimes they're off slightly based on where you find that nearest post that you can mount them to because you have to affix them to something. They have a digital counter in them. They typically don't just leave them on the side of the road to be taken. That is unfortunately an issue in that industry.
The only reason why I raise it is because being on this bend, the speeds are going to be much less. If you did it in front of our property, closer to there, I see cars flying by 50 miles an hour, so I think it would play a role here in the data that you collected.
Phil, do you think you can ask the vendor, just using the map, to actually tell us the distance from the driveway that he actually posted these? So we could give it to Kim, just to have Kim review it from that standpoint. Do you think that would be appropriate, Dan?
I do, and I did speak to Kim about this question yesterday, and we also talked about the weather issue, and so he's aware of both of those issues, and he's going to submit a memo to the board. But in talking to him, his thinking was that, given the results that came in of those two days, how similar they were to the 2016 counts, he thought it would be appropriate to add a factor of, say, you know, three or four miles per hour to the counts that happened this year, to account for maybe the issue with the curve or the issue with the weather or both. So I think he's going to fall eventually on the suggestion that we accept 40 as the design speed for purposes of sight distance. And that sounds like something that you're agreeable to anyway, so I think, maybe not, but that's where I think where he would be at, and if that wasn't acceptable, maybe we'd have to redo the counts, but he'll submit a memo to the board.
Okay.
I think we would just probably wait on his memo, and Chris, if you have anything else.
Yeah, I think we've collected enough data at this point. And recall, this was supplemental data because the other data had become a bit stale. So we went out, did additional data. I think we could add a factor, I mean, do whatever the engineers decide is appropriate, and then decide, figure out where the sightlines fall, and then whether or not, you know, the board's willing to accept that condition. Again, understanding that we can maneuver the driveway, and we can have a discussion about, you know, what level of potential encroachment as far as the sightlines is generally acceptable, and that in the context of 40B would be appropriate.
Okay. Is there any questions from the TB board members here?
TB?
Yeah, it sounds like a tuberculosis board. You're duck-hopping like crazy over here. I said, "My God," I said, "They shouldn't even be here."
We can leave.
Any questions?
I do have one question. Phil, I want to make sure I'm reading this accurately. We can wear a mask. The peak between 6:30 and 7:00, I'm looking at this.
Want you to look at the page here.
Sheet right here, page, there's no page on it. It's volume report.
Are you looking in the report or in the data itself?
This document right here.
I just didn't know the page.
Yeah, it doesn't have a page number.
This page, if it's a page?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. Is this correct? Between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning, there are 369 cars that are traveling northbound and southbound in that half-hour span?
I'm sorry, which?
Between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning, if I add those three, 6:30, 6:45, and 7:00, the total is 369 vehicles?
I would have to do the math, but if you're looking at, that's a total.
Right, so north and southbound, but the number of vehicles going either way at that point at that time of the day.
Can we make sure we're on the same page? You're adding 124, 137, and 108?
Yes.
I'm, I've lost my mental math skills to do that off the top of my head, but the, it seems.
What's that? 369. 369, can you confirm that, Sean? All right, all right.
That is northbound and southbound, sir. So that, I mean, the, on that same page, it does show the breakdown of northbound and southbound traffic. I mean, I know that number seems fairly high. The capacity of a roadway of that type, you know, is generally thought to be in this sort of area, easily 1,000 vehicles per hour in either direction. So this number may look high, and you may think there's a lot of cars coming, but again, it's a two-lane road, so divide that number by two or close, you know, they're not all going in the same direction.
Yeah, all right. Sean, can you, that number jumped out at me, it seemed.
And just to clarify, that's a 45-minute increment, so each of those measurements.
6:30 to 7:00 is a half-hour increment.
Right, but that's the entered, so it actually includes the seven and a half minutes on either side of it.
All right.
So each one of those represents a 15-minute interval, each one of those totals. Correct me if I'm wrong, though.
Each of those is a 15-minute interval. I apologize. Do you have a specific question or just commenting on the volume?
That jumped out at me. That seems like an outrageously high number of vehicles.
Unfortunately, it's not.
It's not?
Yeah.
I would say it's average or below for a roadway of this type in Boston, honestly.
In some cases, you could have 1,000.
I'm asking the question because I don't know the answer, but now I.
I told you to back up and drive forward a couple more times.
I tried.
You didn't listen. You didn't listen.
I tried.
Devin, did you have a question?
Sure. So I know there's just some talk about having the town survey this. Can Andrew's Survey and Engineering stamp this plan? Stamp a boundary plan?
Yeah.
And that way, it's locked in where those are confirming relative to the sightlines we're showing. Sorry, not we're showing, but you're showing.
Andrew's can stamp that plan.
Kristen LeBree from Andrew's Survey and Engineering. Our EC plans in the, that are in this set, have those new lines in them, and they are, it is already stamped.
Oh, it is? Okay.
The new street lines, anything we survey goes into our base plan, which is then updated, which is into this plan set, so they're technically already stamped, but we could do a blow-up and restamp them and show it.
No, I don't think that's necessarily required. I just wanted to make sure that we, those property lines are confirmed.
Yes, and again, there is a recorded subdivision plan that indicates a stone boundary, which was located and then surveyed off of that. So they were able to locate some of the bounds that were associated with the abutting property that's in question, or at least the one directly across the street that, Dan, is implicated with the left turn-in boundary line where the fire hydrant is.
And then, just to follow up, I thought we had talked about preparing a sketch just showing your available sightline within the right-of-way for that southbound left-hand turn into the site.
Yeah, we showed.
Are you asking us to add, I guess, an additional arrow of what's available if you stay within town right-of-way?
Yes.
We can update this to reflect that, so. What we showed is obviously, is what you would get if you removed shrubbery. We can modify that to show if you stay within town right-of-way based on that survey.
I won't repeat what Dan's already said, but more, you know, Dan was talking about shrubbery that could potentially be added in that area by, you know, a homeowner in the future. So I just want to see what the worst-case scenario would be to be able to judge, you know, if that would be a concern.
Yeah, I think the additional detail and those types of details are important, but I think the suggestion would be, since we've, when you come down to an issue that's highlighted as a concern like this, where it is an engineering issue, I think a work session is probably the best setting to really present those types of details, and then, you know, we can go over them and then re-present them to the public hearing, so you can actually sit down, dig into what we're looking at. So we can have more of that information, Bill. You can depict that on the plan.
We can show an inset, too. I know there was a comment, Dan, that there was a lot of trees, and the figure was blurry, so we can show an inset if need be there.
So I think what will be helpful for us to put closure on this issue is to have the inset so we have a clear picture of where those lines cross, the private property lines, and it's both corners, just to be clear. It's the, there's actually three areas. There's across the street at, can you put that map back up? The stopping sight, or either one, ISD or stopping sight distance. That's fine, so it's this area, it's this quarter, and it's this one. And where you're cutting it close, if you could provide the inset views without the extra stuff?
No trees, just show it.
We can keep the trees, but just, there's a lot of lines there. We can kind of reduce the lines.
Blow up.
And then, yeah, blow up. And then, to Devin's point, I think that actually makes a lot of sense to show what the lines would be if you stayed within the right-of-way, and what those distances would be, because then the board can weigh this, because, you know, Chris is right, this isn't a hard and fast rule. It's ASHTO. It's not a law, you know, it's a guideline. It is a guideline that the Housing Appeals Committee applies, but it's still a guideline, so the board can weigh this as part of its decision-making. So if you have, if you're deficient, the board could still approve the project, but it'll weigh that in its decision-making, so.
The only gloss that I'm at, or I'd like to be at a point where we can have Phil and Kim, and have Kim say, "This is where I'm at with Phil on it. This is a decision for the board to make." And I don't think we've gotten there yet. I know you've gone, and Phil, Kim has been great, they've gone back and forth, but I think it would be helpful to have a work session where.
I think just for the sake of efficiency, if we're there and we have a computer and we can do this in real time, otherwise, we're like, we're going to be back here every four weeks maybe going over.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I think, where's Kim's office, do we know? I mean, even if it's.
I think Kim lives fairly far north of here, but I'm not sure exactly where.
Well, I mean, just to be fair, Chris, I did raise this issue to you about two weeks ago, so it's not like we wait every four weeks to have a discussion. I did raise this, and you wanted to have a discussion at the meeting, which is fine, but I think, I don't think we have to have work meetings. I think we've asked for the additional plans. Kim will review them and give us his advice. It's that simple. additional plans, Kim will review them and give us his advice, it's that simple.
So, Dan, I know you raised this, when we submitted the info, what was it, November 15th?
19th or 15th.
When we submitted on November 19th, we thought that we would get a thumbs up or thumbs down or something definitive. Kim has been great, the comment that Phil made to me, and I'll be frank, is, it's tough to tie him down and get an opinion. As you mentioned, this is a gray area, so we thought with this information, we were giving you everything you requested and with adequate data and survey data and additional traffic count to come to a conclusion on this. Where we're having trouble tying this issue down, that was my suggestion. So, I know you raised it before, we're trying to make sure we're as responsive as we can be, we thought we were responsive enough to close it out, where it hasn't been closed out, I'm suggesting that one way to close it out would be get across the table and get there.
And just one other question, Kristen, if I may, you mentioned that the survey, the survey was done, additional survey was done at these property boundaries on Seekong Street. Did the lines change from, on your existing condition plan from the first set in the current set?
Well, the difference go, to be honest, I don't know, because we use abutter lines, which are demarcated as dash lines on our legend, from things that we don't survey, because we do show property lines on all sides, just to show abutters and the approximate abutter line. It went from dash to solid, I don't know if they were different.
Okay.
We could overlay them to see, but...
No, I was just curious, if you found new data that changed the way it looked on the previous plans?
Typically, I would say it probably changed, because those abutter lines are taken from GIS.
Okay.
Which are as accurate as they can be, but...
Okay.
They're not, they're not survey data.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Chairman, are we still waiting on, I think Mr. Cullis brought up the start of the meeting, start of the hearing, are we still waiting on the town survey for the road?
The towns, based on Devin's question to the town, the town is looking at maybe doing a survey of that area, just because we don't have anything of record. So the town has not got back to us whether they will or will not.
Part of the reason I bring that up is I hear a lot of discussion about timing, these folks have gone a long way, and if we come back with new information and there's already meetings going on, I just think we might want to wait to find out if the town's going to do the survey and what their timeline is, rather than have these folks keep going back and forth, so we give them some direction.
I think what we're going to do is wait for Kim's response, see what that is, let Phil answer that again, and then let's, we can move forward from there, whether it would be a workshop or be at this meeting here. And you're going to, Phil, are going to do a couple of things that Devin asked, would you do the available sightline? Is that going to be okay, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's the best way to leave it at this moment, and that way we'll leave Ms. Collins, her question open as well at the same time, just so we can find out maybe what that distance was, have Kim give us an opinion on the distance where they put the bars across the road, if you can find that from the vendor to some greater detail.
I will reach out to the vendor.
Okay, fair?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. So absent of a town survey, we'd be working with the existing conditions?
We're going to work with what we have, and if the town, once we find out the town's stone, we'll certainly alert you.
I just want to clarify, so what you have right now is a survey stamped, or will be stamped by a professional surveyor. So the town survey, I would expect in all cases to replicate the same information, because they're going to apply the same principles, the same boundary information.
Yeah.
The town survey may extend beyond the limits of what they've done, but I don't think it's going to change this information.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. What impact will the town survey have, and you don't think it'll be de minimis at most?
My guess is it can only get better, because there's a fire hydrant here that...
We know there's a fire hydrant there, I tell you.
Think about that fire hydrant.
I could have it removed and give it to you by the end of this project.
We've identified the constraints, and I think that's the important part.
Yeah, okay.
One more question, Chris?
Sure.
Chris, the actual stones that you find on the properties that actually, have those all been identified?
The stone boundaries?
The stone boundaries, they've all been...
Yeah, that was the big, and Travis made that comment to me directly, that this, the one that, sorry, I don't want to get anybody, stone bounds, yes, mets and bounds.
Right.
Right, there's a stone bound that's noted on the subdivision plan that was recorded at this location here.
Right.
And that was located.
Okay.
And from there, they're able to discern the rest of the lines.
So the closest stone bound that was identified near this property was right, that's the closest one?
Yeah.
So, I just want to point out, sometimes they're stone-bound, sometimes they are iron pins, there are multiple types of markings and monuments, there's multiple forms of monuments. So I don't want you to go out there and look for this granite, sometimes they are granite with pins, but sometimes they are iron posts, they're rebar, sometimes they're piles of stones. So there are multiple forms of monuments that we use for survey.
We're going to look for the fire hydrant. Chris's fire hydrant.
A little bit of benchmark.
Okay, all right, so we're going to get a report from Kim, get back to Phil. We have one question in the audience, could you, Phil, could you pass the microphone back?
My name is Deborah Gersha, and I live right across the street from the proposed housing development, and I just had a few comments. Amy, I was going to ask a favor, if you could zoom out, please, a little bit, okay. So, if I may, I just want to show you where my house is located.
Sure, come on up.
Thank you. So, our family lives in this house, right here, and these properties are not level, so when we go to leave our house in the morning, we sit up top driveway, and the elevation's about 10 feet. So for us to see, and we would be making a left on Seekong Street, we sit here about 10 feet up, and we actually can see across the Mullanes' yard to about here, to know that it's safe to get on to Seekong Street. So the other point is, you know, we're pretty good friends with the Mullanes', who, they actually live over here in this house, and they had no idea about the potential clearing of vegetation on their property at all, they had no idea, they're out, they're in the dark about this. And Mrs. Mullane actually raised a good question, she said, "Who is actually going to come on my property and clear my land to create this potential line of sight?" And then, we also have a huge amount of white pines, and as you probably know, they're native species, and they grow 12 inches a year, and her question is, you know, 10 years out, who's going to be coming on the property to clear out this vegetation, which mostly is going to be white pines? So the other thing is, as I said, we're really good friends with the Mullanes', and this vegetation is super thick here, this tree line, I mean, we barely can walk from house to house because the trees are so profuse in this area. So they actually have probably landscaping that's about 30 years old, and that was proposed tonight, who's to say if the Mullanes' might want to go ahead and do extensive landscaping on their property, it's their property, they have a right, so that's another question. Also, our neighbors on this side, they put a fence in with the last two years, a decorative fence, and if we're talking about right-of-way, I mean, how much is actually going to be cleared out? I mean, a lot of the neighbors actually pumped some serious money into their houses in the last couple of years. And then my husband Jim and I, we actually just bought some shrubs at the end of the season, and we put them about 15 feet back, and then we also had concerns whether or not those would actually have to be removed. And again, we got a great deal at end-of-season pricing, and I contacted Inspector Bullock at the Building Department, and I said to him, you know, "Bob, we got these great shrubs at the end of the season," and I said, "How far back would they potentially clear cut?" And he basically said, you know, "It all depends." So when you're looking at all these neighbors along the street, I mean, a lot of people, these houses were built in 1983, they're all being spruced up, refurbished, we just need to know what the set point might be where we're talking about possible clearing of the front of our property to accommodate this housing project. I mean, it's not fair for the people that are putting their personal money into these houses. So the other thing I just want to mention too, you know, my husband and I had three kids along the way, and our kids did go to Medfield Schools, and then we switched lines and we did come here to Norfolk. But the other point of this too is, all the critical infrastructure is actually south of this housing development. So you've got St. Jude's Church, where a lot of people go to church, you've got King Philip's School System, you've got the actual Norfolk School System. So what happens when these kids miss the school bus and their moms or their dads have to come flying down this driveway in the morning and try to bang a left onto Seekong Street? I mean, that's going to be really dangerous. We've all been there where our kids have missed the school bus, and we've had to pack them up in the car and drive them. Other things like after-school, the ballet, a lot of people go into ballet in the center of town now, CCD at St. Jude's, everyone's banging a left out of this housing development, so there's really, real concerns, not only during the school day, like the Cullins would have with their three kids, but all the other people that are going to all these after-school activities. So in terms of public safety, there's some real concerns. Also, another point is physical infrastructure, mostly all the telephone poles on Seekong Street are located on this side of the street. So we've got the Mullanes', we've got the Gershas', we've got the people next door to us, and it's really hard to maintain that line of sight. Another example is during the winter of 2015, when we had the snowmageddon, at the end of our driveway, we had snowbanks that were eight feet tall. I mean, we literally, instead of having a snowplow guy come, we actually had to hire a guy with an excavator to actually excavate our driveway, and the snowbanks were actually eight feet tall, so we had a really, really hard time getting out of that driveway. Yes, it was a freak storm, but, you know, who's to say that some type of storm season like that might not happen again? Also, a bunch of us here used to live in Medfield, and we lived in Medfield after the aftermath of the Amy Fisk fatality. As you probably know, there was a young girl killed in a drunk-driving accident on the Medfield side of the street. So what happened was, during the mid-'90s, the town fathers of Medfield were able to get grant money, and with the grant money, it was a public, it was a partnership with public money, and the town of Medfield did some of the work themselves in kind labor, but the point was, they applied for grant money, they got the grant money, and they basically widened South Street, the part where Seekong Street goes over the town line and becomes South Street. They were able to widen and straighten out some of the twisting and turning, so it makes Medfield a lot safer, the same stretch of street on the Medfield side is a lot safer because they straightened and widened the street. There's no master plan here in Norfolk to do the same thing, so, you know, it's almost to the point where it would be nice if this street was actually widened and straightened before this housing project goes in. I mean, how many young girls are going to get killed on a street like this, you know, just to accommodate the new housing, but it's definitely something to think about. I mean, we still think about Amy Fisk, the app center at Medfield is named after her now, and it's a shame that there was no place for her to swerve when this drunk driver was coming at her, but it's all some things to think about. Also, we do have a telephone pole in front of our house, our driveway's over here, the telephone pole is here, you're able to put a traffic control device on the telephone pole anytime, and my husband Jim is in the traffic control industry, and if you'd like to have some free consulting, Jim said he'd be available to help you guys out with this project. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to, next, do you want to talk about the engineering? Sean, do you want to have some comments on that? We can, okay?
Chris, can you have a confirmation, Chris, or...
Yeah, do you want to present your latest plan? Sure.
We can present what has evolved since the October 27th plan iteration. I can turn it over to Kristen Labrie, who has been the lead designer behind the scenes, working the computers and the details, and she's going to take over from here, and we get to discuss the fun stuff like sewage and water.
Okay.
Awesome. So, just again, Kristen Labrie from Andrew's Survey and Engineering. So what we have here is, this layout is slightly different than the last one you've seen. So what we've done was, there are no more crossroads. We also got, the boulevard is gone, we've gone through with the fire chief, we've gotten his blessing on the level of that boulevard, and we do have that letter from the fire chief with that blessing. We've come up to this roundabout where we have a bus stop, and talking with shared mailboxes that would accommodate both the bus shelter and the mailboxes, with a hard median in there. The sidewalk comes up here, follows that, and then there is a grass strip, as you get closer to here, that grass strip does go away by the mailboxes in the bus shelter, just to avoid that extra distance for pedestrians. We have a crosswalk here, where the sidewalk continues down here, and then the sidewalk remains on the inside of the property, where there, again, is a grass strip, so it's a, I believe, a three-foot grass strip and then a four-foot sidewalk. So the sidewalk is here, what we've added is, we've added a trail system, so there is a paved path that goes from this side of the property to this side, and then there's a proposed walking path that goes through here, comes back down with an access, this would be used for access to both the wastewater treatment plant, but also the infiltration basin, and it would double as a pedestrian walkway down here, where there's also a path that connects from here to here, that would get to the proposed ball, the proposed recreation fields that are on top of the leaching field. So the layout has changed, as you can see, those, the cross streets have gone, there's 84 units, mix of duplexes and single units. What we've done is we took in the comments that we got from Sean, all of the driveways are at least 20 feet back from the right-of-way, so that's, the driveway itself is around 24 to 27 feet, depending, some of them are longer, but that is the minimum that we used. The separation is at least 21 feet from unit to unit.
Minimum distance?
Minimum distance. The last page of the plan is a zoning table, which shows you the minimum distances on each lot from house to property line, and house to front, rear property line, side property line, front property line. We were able to remove, with reworking the grading, we got rid of a good number of walls, so the wall that was up here that was proposed is gone, we were able to rework that grading. We were also able to rework all of the stormwater systems to make them a lot better than how they, what they were designed before. They're all, most of them are oversized, so they, these two ponds are now designed to handle an eight-and-a-half-inch storm. A 100-year storm is about 6.7 inches of rain in 24 hours. Those ponds are now sized to handle eight-and-a-half inches of rain in 24 hours, and they still will not overflow, will be fully contained within there. This one does have an emergency overflow, so if it ever exceeded an eight-and-a-half-inch storm, which is over a 100-year storm, it would go into an overflow, we are, that would go out, but again, that's way over a 100-year storm. This pond is designed with an outlet structure that pipes back into an underground system that goes into this pond, so any emergency overflow that comes out of this pond would actually go back into an underground network and into this pond. We did alter the overflow for this pond, so it's no longer pointed to this property as pointed to the wetland, that, we took that comment into consideration. But the grading, we were able to decrease the grading in a lot of areas and move the affected work area and the limit of work over in this area and here, and we were also able to pull it out from this corner, we were able to pull that in a lot more and over.
Could you just comment on two things, and I know we haven't gotten a full report from the board's wetlands consultant, but one of the concerns was about preserving this wetland, and there was a concern, you know, it's a common concern in these developments, as you know, could you talk about that and then briefly talk about the design that you've worked on back here as far as the leaching field and the basin, and then Steve Smith is going to complete the discussion after Sean comments about the details on this, but if you could just introduce what's going on over here and this issue?
Amy, if you want to go to the plan set, because this is a, the picture, and then, that's a well, yeah, and then if you want to go to sheet 3.3? Actually, Chris, no, on the top, it's got the up and down. Oh, perfect. One more. Yeah, so, if you want to go up one, actually. So you can see the top of the wetland here, just so, I'll talk about it more on the other one, but this heavy dash line is the limit of work, this lighter dash line with the, they are diamonds, you can't really tell, but with the dots, is the edge of the wetland. So, you want to go down another one? So we were able to move this out, so this dash line right here is the 50-foot buffer, so 50 feet from the edge of the wetland, we were able to move out the limit of work almost to the 50-foot over here, and all that's being done in there is grading, there is no permanent... And all that's being done in there is grading, there is no permanent infrastructure going in there. It would be grading and then it'd be seeded, there could be landscape plants planted on top of it. But it would be, it would be restored back to vegetation. There is, the only place that we are inside the 50 with, with a unit is actually down here. And then up here, we're in between the 50 and the 100. But on this side, and even up here, we're able to pull out of our grade, our disturbance, our temporary disturbance, we were able to pull that out. And then down here, what we did was, the leaching field is designed to be able to be seeded and create a recreational, recreational field for public use after the fact. So once it would be designed, it would be stabilized, but then it would, it could be used for recreational use, which is why we added this path around here, so they, people can walk there. We had parking spaces down here for people that want to use that field if they did end up having games or, or just want to go to the park. They could park and they can walk down this sidewalk and walk down this path and get there. There are other abilities we can do to it, we can, we can widen that and we can build things, we can't put anything permanent into it, but we could build up if we wanted to put like a playground or a pad of some sort. We'd like to keep it just a recreational field, though, that's ideal, because it'd just be low-man seed. The separation between these, we have about, we kept it 100 feet from the, at the berm of this to the corner of that, to the nearest corner. Other than that, it's, it's about 112 to 130 feet away. Steve will get more into the details of the hydrology and the mounding of that, but we tried to, that separation we wanted to keep, and we got all of the basins away from that wetland, where before, you'll remember, we had a basin up in here. We were able to remove that and widen this. And the location of this basin, it is, looking at this plan, you'd say, why can't we just move it over closer to the property line? If you go down to 5.3? One more. You can see there's, there's a lot of grading here. It is, we, we are altering the grades, so that, this is safe grading, this is three-to-one grading, which is the standard, safe slope grading. But that's what, that's why we can't move the basin over, because the more we do that, the tighter that grading would have to get, and we want to keep it that three-to-one, we want to keep it that safe stabilization.
Thank you. Sean, do you want to comment on the general, and then we can talk more about hydrology? Just to give you some context, Mr. Smith's hydrology report that was submitted to Tetra Tech's hydrologist was originally based on the October 27th plan iteration. This facility has shifted since that October 27th plan. Attorney Hill pointed out, the Tetra Tech's peer reviewer had some questions, again, about this detail and how these facilities interact. So that's what Mr. Smith's going to talk more about tonight. But we do expect that there'll be some additional refinement of this November 27th Plan D that will come out of that discussion, you know, tweaking here and there. But Mr. Smith can talk more about that after Sean presents his comments.
Before we go to Sean, can I ask a question of Kristen while it's fresh? So Kristen, you mentioned the 50-foot buffer, and it's going to be grading with, is there going to be grading within the 50-foot buffer or outside the buffer?
Inside the 50-foot buffer.
Okay. And do you have a plan, do you have a contour plan that shows that? Is that part of your set?
The 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 are all the grading and drainage plans.
Okay, so there'll be, you have the grading details that are within the buffers?
Yes, so you can, you can see how much grading is being done on these specifically.
Okay. And then with, with respect to this, this leaching field, now, it sounds like you're promoting that as a recreational amenity. Who would, who would create that and maintain it? Is this going to be a homeowner association or what's, because that seems to be like, if that's going to be something that's an amenity?
Homeowners Association, and I believe we hinted at that discussion at the last hearing and suggested that passive recreation is what we're proposing and is what is most appealing for a project like this, because if you put in something like a playground, you get into maintenance, attractive nuisance, where this is just the cost to mow the lawn. So that's what we're looking to propose.
Sean?
Sure. So we were able to take the submittal and review it completely for stormwater. So as part of the submittal, they had a revised set of plans and they had a stormwater report. And as you can recall, our biggest concerns from day one was the efficacy of the stormwater system. So we wanted to make sure that we reviewed the stormwater report. We did. Foundationally, it's well-done and it's accurate. There are some things that we'd like to see fixed. For example, the basins that they have designed are, the flow going to them is a little bit too much for what those basins can handle. So there's a simple solution to that, we increase the number of basins, make it a double catch basin, there's, there's solutions to that. Probably one of our more primary concerns, again, that has a relatively straightforward solution, if we can go to the, to the green plan, the colored plan? Oh, no, well, either way, if I, just show me the front driveway, yeah. So the road as it approaches Seekong Street is going down at, I think, around a 6% slope?
Yeah, we have a flat portion, but yeah, it's going directly uphill.
So what happens is, as you go, as you have stormwater that's coming down that slope, it's, it's building speed and its tendency is to jump over catch basins. So as you can see, is, if you go up in a rainstorm and you're on a hill, leaves accumulating the grate, and the water just goes over the top of it. So a lot of that water that the model suggests is going into the detention pond is actually ending up in the street. Simple remedy for that is to, at the entrance, make sure there's a defined low point that collects that water, rather than lets it go past, pass into Seekong Street. So again, a relatively straightforward grading solution. Some of the other questions we had were adjacency issues, where some of the basins are located up gradient from foundation systems, there's standards against that. But all of these are relatively simple solutions to fix and to implement. Aside from stormwater, knowing that stormwater's pretty well-handled, I mean, we have some general comments about the circulation and the, and the density, but we'll put those in a letter and make sure that they're documented for the board. I think it is important for everybody to understand, is this is basically a two-dimensional figure. The, the detention basin, the big blue basin in the, the leaching field, they're about eight to nine feet in elevation difference, so the, the stormwater basin is about eight to nine feet lower than the leach field. So one of our concerns is that, you know, as the water goes down the leaching field, is it, is it going to affect the hydrology of the basin, which is also intended to leach water out as well? I, I think, given the perccability of the soils, we would expect probably not too much lateral confusion between the two systems, but we like to have some documentation for the board to make sure that's, that's adequately shown. Aside from that, I think they've gone a long way in addressing a lot of our prior questions. I like the idea about the, the sort of interactive walkway system. For those of us who have walked out there, that, that wetland system where the trees are through the middle of the site is a, is a pretty cool wetland system. It's not the traditional swamp. It's, it's called a, like, a discharge wetland, so it's a unique wetland system where groundwater is actually coming from the ground through the surface, rather than through the surface into the ground. So it really creates a kind of a pretty cool amenity to walk through and to see. So I'm kind of happy that they did that. But aside from that, I think they're definitely on their way to getting a complete plan.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Do the basins need to have protection around them?
So, there's, there's a couple different schools of thought on that. Sometimes people will recommend it, I personally advocate against it in all cases. All it does is look ugly, trap trash, prevent access in the case of trying to maintain it. And people will cite a concern for safety. My attitude, having been a child once, if you put a fence around something, there's no more certain way to make me want to get in there. So our concern is putting up a fence is, if you do have to respond to an emergency, it only precludes you from responding. And traditionally, the slopes, and as Kristen suggested, they're trying to maintain three-to-one slopes. The reason three-to-one is a good measure is because it's viewed as a mowable slope. So not only is it stable for maintaining the surface, it's mowable, so it gives you an idea of how gradual a three-to-one slope is. Above a three-to-one slope or steeper than a three-to-one slope, we start to get more concerned. At three-to-one or more gradual, we generally don't have any concerns about stability or safety.
And the three-to-oneness maintained with leaching field is versus the basin?
It's, I believe, all the inside slopes of the basin, so the slopes going down to where the water would be, are three-to-one. And I think all the, the substantial grading around the basins are three-to-one. I think there's one small area up towards the, I guess it would be the...
There's a two-to-one.
In this here, there's two-to-one grading, but a relatively small area.
Any other questions for Steve? You have Steve talk?
I was, I was going to just comment, I agree with Sean's comment on the security screening around ponds, they kind of, under that same belief myself.
There's, there's actually like a legendary detention pond on 495 in Mansfield that you might have seen. There's a detention pond in the middle of the highway median that's got this garish fence all around it. And it's just a laughable situation where someone says, well, someone could get into it. It's in the median of a 495, but yet, you know, they put the fence on it. And Mass DOT complains about it all the time because they can't get in and maintain it. So, I'm a big fan.
And then, Sean, do we look at, with soils that are so permeable, just potential for breakout from the actual pond moving laterally?
Right. So we'll, we'll need to take a look at that. The one good thing about the detention pond is it's a periodic sort of infiltration system, where it doesn't, it's not loading all the time. Our bigger concern with regard to bakeout is, is the infiltration system for the treatment plan, because that's going to get flow every day, it's going to reinforce pathways, it's going to, it's more likely to break out along that interface. So we'll take a look at that, and we'll have to make sure there's provisions in place to prevent it.
I'd just like to make an observation. I live on 53 Seekong Street. Since December of 2017, I've had several discussions through email, in person, and over the phone with the DPW regarding water runoff on Seekong Street and flooding there. The main concern, I don't know, you did bring up something, because it's, because the project's at an elevation. You did bring up water collection at the foot of the project. I want to know if there would be some sort of cleanup, because the existing water basins on Seekong Street, a lot of them are clogged up or not been maintained, and they freeze over in the winter. And that affects people driving into their driveways and going into other roads. So that has been a concern. I have it documented with the Department of Public Works. I also would like to see this project as an, also as an opportunity to somehow address the excessive speeding on Seekong Street. I would say the speeding on Seekong Street is in excess of 45 miles per hour. So, and we have our own speedometers, and we have our own observation, we have our own children outside waiting for buses. But I'd like to see, I mean, I don't know if there would be, I mean, I'm looking at your potential mitigation section, I don't see any mention of possible speed bumps like the ones that were installed on Everett Street, just so your project doesn't make the situation worse on Seekong Street. I understand that you may not be responsible in improving it, but we don't want it to get worse.
So Sean touched on the hydrology in this area. As I mentioned, we submitted a comprehensive hydrology report that Mr. Smith prepared that specifically addressed the location of the leaching field in the October 27th plan set. As I've mentioned, that's since moved, and we've, we've updated that. I also received an email from Attorney Hill that outlined some additional data that Tetra Tech's hydrologist was looking for relative to this basin, again, referencing the concern Sean had about the effects of groundwater mounding in this area. There were several requests that were specific to that concern, so we went back and looked at our existing data and applied that generally to the new location of the leaching field. And we're going to share that with Tetra Tech's hydrologist so that we can get a comprehensive response from them. The other issue that we evaluated was the proximity to these private wells. We pulled the data from the town and plotted those on a plan that was submitted to Amy. So Amy, maybe you can put that plan up. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith to address both the private well question and then just the hydrology and design around that leaching field and basin four generally.
Steve Smith from Geohydrocycle. One thing that I learned, looking through the logs and the well information, was that the four wells that we show on here, 1, 2, 3, and 4, it's 136, 134, 130, and 128. Am I right? One thing I found was that you could estimate groundwater levels, static groundwater levels in each one of these wells based on the log information we have. And for example, at 136, we have a groundwater elevation of about 215 feet. If you go down to 134, the groundwater elevation is, is actually higher, it's 246. Groundwater in this well, static is 193, and the static down at 128, Seekong, is 130. But the importance of this is, is that the groundwater mounding that we got in this basin, we have a groundwater elevation of 172 here. This means that the groundwater at the basin is lower than the groundwater in all four of these wells. So what that's going to provide is, this, this basin will actually be safer, because we have groundwater flow, if anything, from the wells toward the basin. We do have a groundwater divide in here, and I suspect that most of the groundwater flows in the, in this direction, the southeast direction on the east side, and on the west side, probably a southwesterly direction. But that was a, that was an important find in just looking at what effect the leaching field may have on the four butter wells. Are any questions?
Steve, is this a, is it, would you characterize this as a bedrock aquifer? Or, because wouldn't that matter in terms of your assumptions of groundwater flow?
In what respect?
Well, groundwater and bedrock can move in different directions, it depends where the fissure, where the fractures are, right?
It's been my experience, the groundwater tends to flow in the same directions as the subficial aquifer, unless it acted on by an outside force, say, like a large municipal well or something like that.
Are these bedrock wells?
These are bedrock.
The neighbors' wells? Okay.
And they are bedrock wells. Whether, whether or not groundwater flow would be different, Dan, I think what we're seeing is that groundwater is still higher here than it is in the subficial aquifer over here.
And Dan, that's consistent with what we'd expect, a stop river is down here. Generally, the flow would be expected to move towards the stop river.
Stop river's over here.
And the surface elevation is, goes high to low in that direction? The ground, the ground elevation, the surface elevation goes from high to low from plan east, I'm playing west of plan east?
The highest elevations run along this, this divide here. And, you know, the ground surface in here is in the 180 range here, and it's in the 200s in here, but it does get down to the 180s in, as you go further south on Seekong.
Actually, can I ask a quick question before we move?
Sure.
So Steve, were those the only wells in the area? I'm just amused to seeing a circle around the leach field and all the wells identified within a radius around the leach field. Were those the only wells in the, in the area?
Hold on. There is other properties that are closer to the, to, or within this 1,000-foot radius, 1,000-foot radius, yeah, not diameter, and, but they are on town water. So Seekong Street is a mixture of town water and private wells, so.
So south?
We actually pulled, sorry, Dan, we actually pulled five properties when we went to Town Hall, but that one was outside 1,000 feet as well, so.
So what would be helpful, just as a, as a, as a piece of documentation, is to have, even if it's an eight-and-a-half-by-11 figure, it shows the location of the leaching system, and then a radius around that, and then identifying any wells within that radius, regardless of whether they're upgrading or downgrading, just as an inventory of what's around?
Yep, absolutely not.
Yeah, exactly. The radius will show the absence of a well, and therefore we'd have a record of that, because right here, all we're looking at is the west side and not the south or the east.
Yep.
Sorry, Kristen, I.
No worries.
Yeah. That's me. Why don't, can you go down to the figures, next one? Oh, good, good. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take you back to the November 27th report, October, excuse me, October 27th report, and just to let you know about where I started from in this, so that you can get an idea of what I did, and the kind of forcing that allowed Kristen to take a look at some of the issues around the leach field, and what was one reason why she decided to move it. These are the site features, property line, where the proposed leach field was, it moved a little bit to the south. What I did is I installed six groundwater monitoring wells, each one of these wells were, were drilled down to refusal, and monitoring, wells were installed, next figure, please? We took elevations in the wells, and we saw groundwater flowing basically to the south, and a little bit to the southeast, basically toward this wetland off the property. We looked at what effect seasonal high groundwater would have on that, that actually raised groundwater about three feet, so that when I do any modeling, or add a mound to it, we're starting at a very high groundwater level. Next figure, please? These are just model details. So, with a discharge in this area of 25,000 gallons per day, we're looking at about, a mound of about 2.6 feet beneath the system, and what we do, what I did was I took this mound and added it on to the seasonal high groundwater, and that's the next figure. So what we have are, these are mounded groundwater elevations based on seasonal high groundwater, and what we still have is, we still have a southerly groundwater flow, even adding the 2.6 feet on to it, and it was these elevations, and when Kristen looked at this, she had some thoughts about what effects this would have on the system in here, and also what effects it may have on the stormwater basin to the east. Now, we're, we're back, go back to the last one. Thank you. So, as a matter of fact, I think, well, Kristen, you can probably add on to what your thought process was when, you know, this was, when you saw this.
So, when, when we saw this, we realized that we had, in our old layout, the basin was in that island, if you remember, the road ran under it, and there was another road on top of it, it was, it was kind of in an island, what I was looking at was, we set our, our base, our leach field at 188, so looking at this, and I, I could see that the elevations were, were far above that, we realized that we actually, this was the old location, and when we modified our layout, we moved that basin down, because we moved the road up, and we got rid of that crossroad, and we shortened the road, so the basin is now a lot farther south, which, which would help in the case of the stormwater interaction with the basin, because as it moves down the hill, that mounding isn't gonna be as high, we're able to lower that leach field, so we have a finished grade right now of about 188, which, as we go through grade, mounding calculation, we can modify, if need be, but as a preliminary start, we set that at 188.
Yeah, this was, you can see if we move the basin a little bit to the south, this whole kind of bullseye would move to the south too, and that's what Kristen was talking about, we're moving to higher elevations with a higher mound, south, and it, it helped the design, and the design of the basin, and also of the stormwater basin too. And I have some results that I'm gonna be sending along to Sean, to show what the, the new mounding and the results of it would be, considering the relocation of the basin.
So, just, just before we get off of this, this is a really good graphic for the board to take a look at, because what this represents is, what happens when you introduce a new stormwater discharge, it creates a little, a little bubble on top of the existing groundwater, it's called, called the mound, what this shows is, is exactly what happens when you introduce that 25,000 gallons per day, there's a 2.6-foot rise in the groundwater below the, the leaching field, as you move away from that, and particularly in the direction of the flow, that, that, that rise gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and that's why you see the numbers get lower and lower and lower, as you, as you get to a point where there are no more yellow lines. The yellow lines pretty much give a good graphic representation of, of where there is an increase in the groundwater, from the loading of the, of the system, and this is what we would expect to see, because as the groundwater moves to the south, it sort of skews that mound to the south, that's why you see predominantly a vertical arrangement there, so this is consistent with what we would expect.
Yeah. Steve, why is the bullseye right in, in the middle of the field, I guess, my, I always assumed the leaching field distributes the wastewater evenly throughout the space, is it really concentrated in the middle of the field, as this would suggest?
The reason why it, it turns into a bullseye, basically what you're doing is, the water you add here, in order for it to get out, has to wait for the water in front of it to get out, so basically, you create a high spot in the center, you're adding from the top, and if you put a drop of water here, if you're putting drops of water throughout, uniformly throughout this area, so, this drop of water.
Kind of like traffic.
It's a traffic jam.
Picture, picture, the guy in the middle can't get out until the guy that got in before him on the edge gets out first, so, he, basically, this, the, the loading in the middle of the leach field has to wait for all the loading on the sides of the leach field to move through the soils first, so it's being slowed down.
And that's, that's one thing, that's another thing about groundwater, that it travels slowly, we're talking about one foot a day, and that's, that's high-speed groundwater, 45 miles an hour, won't happen, so, does that help, Dan?
It does.
Any other questions on this?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
So, what we're expecting is to submit, as Steve pointed out, this mounding analysis was for the, the leaching field at the October 27th location, we've done some additional analysis based on the data that we've collected, and the soil conditions in the area, and Steve has applied that to the revised location and the newly designed basin, and we're going to submit that additional data to the board, that was, you know, obviously, the plan was submitted after that, so, after the last report, so, we know that there's some additional refinement there, but I think the important thing that we can check off the list, and we'll, we'll present the plan so that you have it in the record, is that based on all the hydrology we have, there, there's not going to be any interaction with the private wells, so that was a concern that was raised, and I think we can alleviate that concern, I do think that our, our next iteration is going to be able to prove, and again, from a preliminary analysis, that the configuration of the leaching field in proximity to this basin, and as Sean described, and, and Dan has indicated, the stormwater basin is an infiltration basin, so that's going to be adding water to the water, to the groundwater, so you're going to get some interaction with this infiltration basin, basin and groundwater, and we wanna know preliminarily that there are no major defects in that design, that, that's where we wanna get to at this point. As I stated at the outset, this facility has to be permitted by the state DEP for a groundwater discharge permit, I know Steve can speak from experience, and, and I've seen that the DEP's process on this is comprehensive, and I know that Dan's concern is the waiver of local bylaws that may be implicated by a structure like this, and we can go through those local bylaws, but as far as our, our position on it, my, my original position on it was, we weren't even gonna give you a hydrology report, we were just going to show you the location, and say that it fits, and that we're gonna permit it with the state. You know, concerns were raised about proximity to private wells, that's a local concern, we've submitted sufficient hydrology to satisfy that concern, I think Dan can probably point to a, a, a local bylaw or two that's implicated by the proximity of these two structures, so, I think with the information we have, we should be able to give the board a comfort level at this stage that it works, and, you know, we should hear back from Tetra Tech that preliminarily, there are no obvious defects that would implicate a local concern, understanding again, that it needs to ultimately be permitted by the state.
So, while we're on that topic, so Tetra Tech has weighed in, Peter Dillon is the hydrologist or hydrogeologist from Tetra Tech who's been assigned to that, assigned to this, Peter works with Sean, obviously, directly, and, and so I had a conversation with Peter and Sean together a couple weeks ago, and we talked about what information, you know, Peter needs to evaluate these concerns, and the primary concern, from what I understand, is the potential interference between these two recharge systems, and, and it's, the concern is particularly heightened in this project, because it is a, is a, is a dense project, it's, there's not a lot of room in the site to deal with contingencies, so if, if one of these systems fails, it's not as if you can just go to some other portion of the site to, to deal with it, you've got a very topographically diverse site, and so it's, it's a challenging site, so it's, if this is the design that the applicant wants to move forward with, it's very important that, that the town, and the zoning board, acting on behalf of the town, and the conference of permitting process, has a very confident, has confidence that these systems will work as designed, that, that's, there's not going to be the interference, there's not gonna be breakout, there's not going to be mounds, and, and so forth, so, along those lines, Peter looked at the local regulations that would apply to a project like this, but for 40B, and I think everyone knows that Norfolk's Board of Health regulations are among the most strict in the state, influenced by past staff members of, of the town of Norfolk, and, and so they are what they are, so, Peter looked at these, and with all that in mind, recommended that certain elements of the local regulations be applied to this project, you know, subject to the applicant's input, and if, if, if he can be convinced otherwise, that's fine, but, his, his initial response to us was that what he thinks should happen is, he actually gave me a bullet point list of eight things, and one of which was groundwater mounding analysis for the 210 and 100-year storm, using the hydro, hydrocat hydrographs, demonstrating that the basin, this large basin will drain, you know, within 72 hours, which is a state stormwater standard requirement, but, this goes a little bit beyond what the state standards require under, under the Wetlands Protection Act. Second, he recommended permeability testing within the infiltration basin, and that was a lower one, right, basin number four, is that?
Correct.
Okay, so he wanted the, the onsite, you know, this is a, a backhoe with a, can you explain what this is?
I need a little bit more description from you, though.
In situ?
In situ means in the ground.
Permeability testing, falling head tests with a borehole, within infiltration number four, to establish vertical conductivity.
So, so those are, those are, that's a, Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, yeah, those are, those are more refined means of determining how permeable the soils are beneath the, the infiltration system, I think you have to do those for the, for the, for the, for the leaching system, anyway, I think what Peter's asking for, given the fact that they're so close, we'd like a, a similar dataset for the two systems.
Okay, and then, just to complete the, complete the list, and then you can comment, analyze the impacts to groundwater flow at steady-state wastewater discharge with potential interference from stormwater mounding, so I'm assuming what that means is, is mounding analysis using both systems at the same time?
Overlaying the two, and they're, they're gonna be slightly different systems for modeling them, because they're diff, the nature of the discharge is different, so, a little nuance there.
And the frequent, and the rate, like, they happen at different intervals, right?
Correct, they're, they're loading, their, their loading paradigm is, is different, one is a dynamic loading in response to storms, the other is a, is a fairly normal loading over the course of a, equal loading over the course of a year.
Okay, and then we have the determining the elevation of groundwater, bounding at the boundary of the downgraded wetland, to ensure no breakout at, at the downgraded wetland?
Right, and so, so what, 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 the reasons that, that's important is because we've got a fairly significant fill section on the backside of this leaching field, so it's not only important to, to determine whether or not there's breakout up at the higher levels, you have to chase that all the way down the slope to make sure that you're not sort of following, infiltrating down to the, to the native soil horizon, and following the top of that horizon and breaking out at the, at the bottom of the fill.
And he wanted monitoring wells within basin number four, to establish high groundwater and saturated thickness, do you already have those?
So, I think we have wells, but I don't know if it, I don't think it has saturated thickness, saturated thickness is a, is a, is a bit deeper well that, that deals more with the, the, the soil above the bedrock and how thick it is.
Okay.
You may have that information already.
So, what, what they did provide, basically of the eight items, they provided one of them so far, and that's the well location map, and secondarily to that, we had recommended a area of impact analysis for the private wells, which, you know, could include a fracture trace analysis, fracture trace analysis, I think in light of what Steve has provided to us in terms of the groundwater elevations, you know, Peter may, may advise us that it's not necessary, if, if the groundwater elevations on the budding wells are so much higher than, than the elevation.
What we like in those situations is, is a statement from a qualified professional that speaks exactly to that, that for the record, addresses the issue, even though everybody intuitively might say, yeah, that makes sense, it's nice to have it as part of the record, and it shouldn't be much worse.
So, a statement that, you know, we performed an area of impact analysis, and it's our professional opinion that the, that the budding wells are not going to be impacted by the leaching field.
And that cites the, the relevant physics and the relevant issues.
So, so that's a summary of what Peter asked for?
Right.
So, we, I did get a response from Chris, you know, not particularly detailed, but more, more along the lines of what he said tonight, that they're gonna be providing more data, and let's revisit this after we provide the additional data, so, is that still your, your plan, or?
The concern remains showing preliminarily that there's no major defect in proposing basin number four adjacent to the leaching field, okay, you've already indicated that some of the local bylaws that you've identified are comparable to the state requirements, and we have to prove it at the state level, a lot of the requests for information require additional onsite, in-the-ground digging, installation of monitoring wells, that we don't believe is appropriate at this stage, we've done significant testing, as you can see in the ground, we have to do more testing when we actually get to the state approval process, so, what our proposal, and Steve's gonna speak to more of this, and I think we can answer some of those concerns, just directly with the information we have, but I think the answer is preliminarily, we wanna get to the point where we can show it's feasible, and then perhaps, if there are remaining local concerns, we can impose them as a condition that you will do additional testing in the following manner, or show that the state permit addressed the following issues before the board approves final approval, and I'm gonna let Steve speak to that more, but again, this is a, this is a preliminary plan versus final plan type analysis, the critical local concern, again, being private wells, I think we've addressed that one, and, and obviously, we can submit something for the record, but the hydrogeologic evaluation that the state requires is going to require a lot of this, so I think the discussion is going to turn to what, if anything, is gonna be required as an additional detail as part, as part of the final plan, so, with that gloss at a high level, and So with that gloss at a high level, and that was my response to Dan when he requested, you know, that we go back out there and do testing, I'll let Steve answer that from a technical perspective. I've answered it. And what I'd like to add, so one of the key parts to this is a consistent record. So what we've got right now is, we've got Steve's information, and we've got Kristen's information. Those two things need to come together, and they need to be consistent, and they need to be consistent throughout the submittal. So we can't have a hydrogeo study that even shows a slightly different location. There's got to be a level of consistency among the information, and I think we're getting there, but let that be the goal. No, no. And as soon as Dan sent the email, and I agreed that the concern is a valid concern that we should present to the board, and we've already started work on that, we hoped, and I told Dan we'd have it as soon as we could. You know, they were discussing these issues up until, you know, this afternoon. So we will present everything so that it all comes together, and that the mound is reflected for the proposed locations of leaching field. And then maybe we can get, you know, a response letter from Tetra Tech on that. And to the extent we want to reserve some of these till final approval. Or I think what it may come down to is, to the extent the state evaluation does not address a particular issue, if the board wants to propose a condition that the state might not address, you know, we can evaluate a proposed condition like that. But otherwise, our belief is that the state is going to hit on all of these issues in detail when they go through the hydrogeo eval. And I think we've already, you know, like I mentioned, I've been involved in projects where we put a box on the plan and said, state permit over here. We come back with a state permit, they stamp it, and we move on. I think, you know, this board wanted to dig into the details, and this is a tight site. There's some interesting topography, you know, the private wells in the area. I think it was appropriate to present this info, and it was, you know, it was submitted to the board, and we'll continue to submit that with the updated plan.
So I think there's some tension, well, first of all, I think what I'm hearing is that there will be a supplemental submittal. There'll be some analysis in terms of the impacts between the two recharge systems. That's a big thing, what Peter's looking for. I think there's some tension here about how much information the applicant wants to provide during the comprehensive permitting process versus waiting until they do a state groundwater discharge permitting requirement. This, we often see this kind of tension in 40B projects, and most of the time, this board, I think, weighs on the side of caution to require the information to be provided during the permitting process, since this is the comprehensive permitting process. And so this is what would be required by the Board of Health for this project if it wasn't for 40B. So this, the information that's suggested here is information that I think is appropriate for the zoning board to review. And I'm sure Chris will disagree, but we can agree to disagree on this fine point. But ultimately, it's going to be up to you guys. If you want to, if you feel that it's important to have this information to make an educated decision on the overall project, then I feel you're, within your right to require it. And if they don't provide it, then that's a factor that you have to weigh in making decisions on conditions and waivers. So hopefully, they'll provide more rather than less, and this will be a moot point.
And I think once they do, Tetra Tech will actually write a letter back, and we'll deal with it at that point. I think, hopefully, you'll provide as much as you can, what you can't or don't want to provide, note that to Tetra Tech, so Tetra Tech can comment back to us, and then we'll make a decision.
Clarification. Hopefully, before Christmas, I would expect before Christmas, we'll have a letter that will incorporate all our comments on the recent submittal, stormwater, site design, as well as try to roll in Peter's, so we have one clearinghouse for all of our concerns. I would caution, however, though, in DEP's review of the hydrogeo study, they're not going to be terribly focused on compliance with stormwater standards. So our biggest concern is to the effect that changes in one system could impact the other. There's a, I would expect a bit of a siloing going on when it looks at the hydrogeo study. It's going to use it for informing their decisions on the wastewater treatment plant. They're not going to necessarily concern themselves too much with the stormwater features unless there's requirements within the groundwater discharge permit guidance. So my concern is, and part of the reason that we're asking for the additional information on the stormwater basin is we expect DEP in their review of the hydrogeo study for the wastewater treatment plant is not going to be terribly focused on stormwater.
Make sure Peter addresses that, so we can drill down on it, as you would say.
Just, if I may, just two points.
No, no more.
Sure meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dan, did you want to say anything?
I'm good.
Good. See? It's fair.
It was a positive statement.
Wasn't that nice? All right. So you think you'd have that, so you're going to have your additional information, and then, I don't know if you're going to have a report out by Christmas.
We will.
You will, okay. When do you think you're getting the information?
Well, we'll have the report out based on what we've received already.
Already, not the additional.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Does it make sense to wait till you get his additional?
No, I don't think so. I think our getting a letter to them helps them consolidate all their next round of information and captures as many of the issues, or speaks to as many of the issues that we've identified as possible.
Well, I do like to set sort of benchmarks with these hearings, so I mean, is there a date that you want to suggest, that you want to provide this information?
Is there anything beyond the endpoints that, as far as the hydrology? Okay. He'll submit what he has, and then, to that point, if Peter Dillon's comments were encapsulated there. Mr. Chairman. Dan, are we getting the information, additional information that you feel that we need?
Well, I think we're going to see.
We're going to see what they provide.
They're going to provide something, and then Peter's going to look at it.
We don't know what yet.
Right. And Peter's going to look at it, and Peter will advise us, gee, guys, I still need X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
And yelling to Mike, is there are changes that our comments are going to prompt within the stormwater design? So what I would prefer to see happen is that the sets of data get addressed concurrently, so everything is one plan, one response, coordinated, consistent.
One question for Dan. You mentioned that Peter had eight bullet items. You went over six. Were...
All right, I'll do them real fast. So the area of impact analysis in the budding wells, you gave us the map, you're going to give us a revised map. Actually, those are two. So we asked for the wells, the well map, that's one. Two is the area of impact analysis. So you didn't give us that, but I think you were telling us there's no impact, so...
We just need a memo.
So maybe a memo to that effect, and we'll see if Peter's okay with that. Three was the in situ permeability testing.
Yeah.
Four is boring and monitoring wells within the area of infiltration basin four to establish groundwater and saturated thickness. Okay. Five is geological cross-section perpendiculars to groundwater flow, including new boring locations, demonstrate that subsurface disposal is 10 feet above bedrock. I don't think I mentioned that before. So is that self-explanatory?
I mean, we do have these, right?
Yeah. And I think a lot of this information is already available through the stormwater testing that they did. So I think it's just a matter of populating both sets of data.
Okay. Six was groundwater mounting analysis for the 210 and 100-year storm. Seven is analyze impacts to groundwater flow at steady-state wastewater discharge with interference of stormwater, so putting those two together. And then eight was elevation of groundwater mounting at the boundary of the downgraded wetland to ensure no breakout. What's that? Great. Yeah. Come on, Chris, he said yes.
I don't know, but one of those was, Steve can describe it.
Okay, we're all set with that. Thank you very much. All right, Steve? The boring holes, the boring holes is what Chris is, right?
The, I think the only thing that's not going to be done by Christmas is going to be that, you know, doing any sort of permeability testing in the basin. I mean, it's a GELF permeometer, and it's, you're basically going to have to dig down to the level of the infiltration and do the testing at that point to get the vertical hydraulic conductivity. And I guess the one I hadn't seen before was a 10 feet above bedrock. That's going to require knowing where bedrock is. If you don't know where bedrock is...
But I thought all your, you mentioned that your wells were advanced to refusal.
Refusal was oftentimes boulders.
All right.
So how hard is that?
Well, why don't we do this? I'll talk to Peter. I'll incorporate in our letter Peter's comments. The extent that Peter changes his opinion or can suggest some alternate strategy, we'll do that. To the extent that they can't respond, they can provide us some surrogate in the rationale for why they don't want to do it, and then, to your point, the board can decide from there.
So what do we have for information of the soils in the leaching fields? You have a soil profile that tells you where...
Yeah. If we can, if you go down, keep going down, please. Oh, yeah. There's one of the boring logs right there. And, you know, as you can see, we get down to, I think, is that 16 feet in that location? Scroll down some more. There should be six of those. And that one is about 12 feet. We hit refusal. This one, 15, well, next page. We get down to 18 and a half feet. And we got down to, it should be 19, 17, 17 feet. And the 10-foot vertical separation was between bedrock and...
Disposal, the bottom of the leaching field?
That should be relatively easy to prove.
Yeah. Do you know, I mean, where's your bottom in relation to these?
Yeah, I mean, Kristen, the bottom of the leaching field.
We can show that with the data we have. I think, we'll have the discussion to Sean. So one thing I'm noticing, that when we went back to our original discussion about testing, we had two types of testing. One was testing for stormwater, and the other was testing in anticipation of the, at the time, what were two leaching fields. There was a plan that Travis did that showed different types of testing. I'm only seeing stormwater testing. Did we ever do any of the deeper testing that establishes aquifer thickness and things like that that we had planned to do for the leaching fields?
That's what you're looking at on the board.
But these don't...
The six wells were solely for wastewater.
But these don't establish aquifer thickness, they don't establish...
Yes, they do.
Okay. So how do you do that without knowing where bedrock is?
In this case, you, what we're assuming is, we're assuming bedrock is at the bottom, effectively. You know, I'm saying that the boulders that we couldn't get through, you know, are sitting on top of bedrock.
Okay. So that would be a good strategy to say, we intend on applying the assumption that bedrock is there. So what happens is, when you do mounting analysis, the height of the mound is affected by the ability of the soil to transfer the water. And aquifer thickness is the amount of soil thickness that the water travels through. So the bigger that aquifer thickness, the smaller the groundwater table. If they restrict the thickness of that aquifer by saying bedrock is higher than it otherwise could be, they're only doing a more conservative analysis. So their mound would actually be bigger, would show as bigger than it actually probably is. So from our standpoint, if they make that assumption, then the net result is a more conservative analysis, so I think we're good with that.
Basically, how thick groundwater is from the water table down to bedrock. If you think of it as a pipe, the thicker the pipe, the more water it'll carry. Same way with groundwater. The thicker the saturated thickness, the more water it'll carry. More water, less mound. So that's one effect. Hydraulic conductivity is the other. It's how fast it can go through the soil. And that's just basically a measure of resistance in the soil. As I said, groundwater moves slowly. Looking at one foot a day, maybe, and that's when it's going fast. So...
So how much time do you need to give us this supplemental report that answers these questions?
That answers these eight points or close to them.
I think, I think that most of this, I've already answered in one way or another. And I can probably have something within the next, by the end of the week.
That would be based on the plans you're looking at today. So the plans that we submitted, if he submitted by the end of the week, it would be based on these plans, not based on plans that I would revise based on his comments on stormwater.
Are you planning revisions to these two systems?
Well, depending on his comments, there may be revisions. I haven't seen his comments yet.
Well, I don't think we want to waste Steve's time putting together a report that it's going to be revised again.
Her reports and her plans are going to be based on his report?
No.
No, no.
His, so if, when I have to revise stormwater based on his comments, then he'll do, then he will do a mound calculation based on our basin, so for him to, we have answers based on these plans to all of your points, or most of your points, that he could give you by the end of the week. But at that point, there's no, there is no point in him giving you those, because our plans will change based on his comments to this set of plans. So you should wait.
How much time do you need then to...
I haven't seen his comments.
How much time do you need?
You'll have my comments either by the end of this week or...
So I can't tell you how much time I need until I see how much there is, I guess.
The plans aren't, the changes aren't substantial, or are not...
That's seacock.
Well, yeah. But they're going to take some work, and I can't, we can't speculate how long it's going to take. She's going to have to wait till I get my comments, and then come back to the board.
So you're probably looking at a month, a month here, and then it goes to Steve for another two weeks or something, right? Or a week?
Once you get my plans.
You need to, Mike.
I think two weeks.
At the end of January, beginning of February, depending on when we get comments. That would be a quick...
Will we actually have Sean's comments?
Sean's comments before Christmas?
Yes. I've said it three times. You will have them before Canadians. Oh, yes, you'll have them before Christmas. And I know Chris was trying to push the whole consultant meeting suggestion of the traffic stuff. I think it would probably be worthwhile if, once we get the comment letter to you, you've had a chance to digest them, you two have sort of strategized on the overlapping issues, then we meet together, maybe Peter and I and the two of you, just make sure that we're all on the same page.
Before we resubmit?
Before we resubmit.
Perfect.
If that's okay with the board, and Dan.
Okay. I'm happy we got that solved.
So mid-February, we, mid-February?
If we want to get everything done, and then meet, take those plans and meet with the peer review, and then even change them after that meeting. Potentially, mid-Fe, I would say mid-February to be safe. But that's with a working meeting with the peer engineers, so...
And then what that would allow us to come back to the board with a more complete, comprehensive, consistent submittal, that we're either at a point where we agree, or at a point of agree to disagree, at which point the board will have to make a decision.
How are we on the 180-day clock?
It's the beginning of February, yeah.
Beginning of February?
I think it is. With the extensions already in place.
The latest one that I have recorded here is February 1st. Does that sound right?
Yes.
All right. So we're going to need until...
We need an extension.
The end of March.
Yes.
I mean, if you give us your stuff by mid-February, we have a meeting. And we also...
What are you talking about? What are you talking about? No, I think.
So, in the meantime, we can work on the site distance and traffic issues. And I did speak with Marty Novar this afternoon. So she was out on the site on Thursday, I believe, with Mr. Rockwood, Dr. Rockwood. And they had a productive visit. Marty witnessed the wetland areas and is going to be providing a report to the board. And so she wanted to know when the next meeting was, so she could be here, answer questions, and we can have a discussion about, about what she found and how, what implications there are with the project. So, that's where that stands.
So, is there any chance we can have that report, since we are refining the plan, if there are things that we can address in that report, or at least mitigate? If we could have the report sooner rather than later, since we're doing a pretty thorough, what is hopefully getting close to a best, best effort in January and February? Can we get that report?
Did Marty tell you a timeframe on that by?
She didn't, but it didn't sound like it was?
Far off.
That far off, yeah. Problem is, we have the holidays right now, so it's, I'm not sure what people's schedules are, but.
Do you want to check with her and just email everybody?
Yeah, I would, just to be safe, I would assume maybe by, by January 10th or something. I, that would seem to be plenty of time.
That should be fine, yeah, as long as, yeah. As long as it's early, early January, that'll give us plenty of time.
And so I guess the question is, do you want to have a meeting in January?
I think right now, we have, January 15th we're booked, so it'd be January 29th would be our next meeting for the ZBA. So we could discuss, we could hopefully, if we don't finish traffic then, and also have Marty come in at that. Okay?
I think that makes sense.
That makes sense, yep.
All right, so January 29th is the next meeting.
Right, 7 o'clock.
We're going to expect a revised submittal and responses to peer review and responses to hydro by mid-February. We'll get traffic discussed before January 29th, and we'll have a wetland report well in advance of that meeting, so you can respond to it. And now, the new date for the closure of the hearing is March 30th?
30.
What'd he say?
March 17th, St. Patrick's Day.
Amy, what's, do you have a calendar? I have a calendar right here.
I just gave mine to Chris.
I got it. So, actually, March 31st is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So, we'll put that down.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything else?
We didn't give any comments from the audience.
We will.
No, I think that's our presentation for tonight. I think that's everything.
Yeah. Any questions from the board, or the audience?
Yeah, just one last question. No, nobody likes your hideous sweater.
I love it. I commend him. And frankly, if I were the chairman, I would have mandated that at this hearing.
What'd you?
The ugly Christmas sweater.
He was competing with Phil Socks from last time. That's the thing. Yeah. Go ahead.
I almost forgot what I was going to say.
That was the idea. No, go ahead.
I was just thinking back.
You're in a dental shop over here.
The sign, the feedback sign for, like, when you're driving, is it possible to just get, like, documentation showing generally, like, how much that actually reduces speed?
Yes, yeah. Phil indicated that, and we've dealt with it on other projects, they have some commentary on that.
That'd just be good.
Yep, we can get that in the record.
There's actually a new one right up at Gump's Farm at the playground. It's right there on, right outside that. So you can see.
But that one, I don't think, that one does, actually, that one does record data, yeah. It's supposed to record data.
They put that up to slow them down.
Yeah. It didn't work. Any other questions yet? Okay, no. Ms. Collins. Grab a mic, please.
I was just curious, did we resolve the bus issue? I know that was an open item last week, last time we met.
Yep, myself and Travis went to talk to Holmes Bus Company, and they are comfortable coming up. They actually made a few suggestions on how we should tweak the design, and that's this latest iteration where the bus stop is. And they're very comfortable with this. They thought it was good. So.
Within development now.
Yes, just for the little kids. The bigger kids is going to have to, the, like, high school kids are, they're not going to get picked up in, but the smaller kids will get picked up inside.
Maybe just get a letter from Tim Holmes here. Tim, you have a question?
So just a comment on the, on the bus. That just reiterates, reemphasizes the importance of that site distance out on the street, with that bus coming in a couple times a day.
Is that good? Okay? Sure.
I don't think we've talked too much about the lighting that's going to affect the property area, streetlights and the lighting from the cars. Will that be a discussion at some point?
We'll be getting to that. Still, architecture will do, and that will get involved there. Deborah, I know you had a lot of, you said you had a lot of statements, which some of them, as you know, will be answered as we get through the traffic study, and others we'll try to narrow down to. Grab a mic.
Mr. Chair, the Cullens and I noticed that Seacock Street is a egress passageway for the stadium. So in other words, when people hit the waves button or other type of mobile apps on their iPhone, it directs the people from the stadium up Seacock Street. And that's when we really experience some excessive speeds, because it's like people break loose from the stadium, and they drive into Norfolk, and then, sort of to make time, they hit the gas pedal. And we've experienced excessive speeds when the stadium dumps out. So that's after concerts, which are normally held in the summertime now, and also after Patriots games. And as you can, as you know, the games could be early in the day, midday, or late at night, but we've experienced excessive speeds. And also, there's companies, it's not only automobile traffic that comes up on Seacock Street, but there's a lot of utility vehicles, utility trucks. And a good example is the TreeTech Company, which is, which has a satellite location in Foxborough. They come up Seacock Street to head to towns like Wellesley and Needham. And I think we should really vision as far as somebody coming down the hill with maybe like a passenger car, like a Honda Accord, Toyota Corolla, along those lines, and possibly getting hit by one of these utility trucks. And a good example is TreeTech who comes up, Cronin Oil comes up and makes deliveries both to Norfolk, Medfield, and some other towns. But if you look at the vehicles, a tremendous amount of them are actually utility vehicles that come up Seacock Street to head to the Metro West area. So maybe we could look at not only the size of the vehicle, but the weight of the vehicle, and the potential impact, add those together, or I should say, multiply them out. Thanks for your consideration on that.
Anybody else from the audience? Any other, any other questions?
I do want to say, and I have it documented, that I've been emailing the Bob McGee down at the DPW regarding reposting 25 mile-per-hour signs that were missing for a number of months, and for enforcing the speed limit on Seacock Street. This is before you came, this is before I even knew about you or your project. I've also been on the website for the police department, offering my driveway for them to come and, you know, read the radar and catch people speeding. It's a real concern. So, that's all I want to tell you.
All right. So, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for Lakeland Hills till January 29th at 7 o'clock PM?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks very much. Have a great holiday. Chris, could we take a five-minute recess? Thank you. Chris, could we take a five-minute recess? Thank you. Welcome back to the zoning board of appeals meeting of December 18th. It is now 9:30. One of our public hearings tonight was 15 Lincoln Street for a special permit. We received an email this afternoon that on behalf of NextGrid, they request a continuance to the January 15th public hearing. So, could I have a motion to continue the public, to open the public hearing for NextGrid on January 15th at 7:30 p.m.?
I so move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could you repeat the time for that one?
That'd be 7:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Under new business, Mike, I wonder if you could read the proposed motion for 35 Pine Street comprehensive permit application?
I move that the board invoke the provisions of Chapter 40B, Regulation 760 CMR 56.053 to the pending application for comprehensive permit filed by 35 Pine Street LLC for the so-called Residence at Pine Street Project. And stay the commencement of the board's public hearing on the application until there are no longer three comprehensive permit applications pending before the board that collectively propose the construction of more than 200 housing units.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Amy, I think this is a roll call vote for this, or is this a, to stay this by the full members?
I don't recall.
I think we'll do it as such. So, for full members. So, in order to stay it, Devin?
Yes, to stay.
Mike?
Yes, to stay.
Yes, to stay.
Yes, to stay.
And on this one, I'm going to, I am going to abstain from this because it's the same owner as 194 Main Street. So, Tim, do you want to...
Yes, to stay.
Okay. Amy, you have it. Okay. Okay. Now, we have the regulatory agreement for the enclave that Tom DiPlastino presented earlier. So, Mike, you can, if you want to paraphrase, what he's basically asking for is that there'll be a change in ownership.
Okay.
You have the same thing you have.
All right.
This is considered a minor modification, but we're going to vote it at the board, and then Amy's going to write a letter to that effect. So, it's a minor modification to change the name of the enclave project.
Okay. I move...
For the staff.
Yes. I move that, consistent with 760 CMR 56.0512B, a comprehensive permit may be transferred to an entity other than the original applicant, and therefore, a permit shall not by itself constitute a substantial change. As such, the enclave of Norfolk is presenting written notice of the transfer of the comprehensive permit in accordance with Condition E1 of the comprehensive permit and/or as an insubstantial change pursuant to 760 CMR 56.0511 and 56.0512.
And I'll add to that is that the new entity will be EE Norfolk LLC, and that Norfolk Holdings will still hold greater than 50% interest.
I'll second that.
And again, I'm going to go with a roll call vote on this, Amy. So, it is a minor modification. It doesn't require a public hearing, but he asked us to put it in writing.
So, it'd be yes to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant. Yes, to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
And...
Abstain.
Abstain. So, and since neither Tim nor Josie were here at that time, we'll limit to the four. Okay?
Okay. We already signed the other thing, right?
Yes. Yep, that was the regulation. At this time, we have some minutes, which is December 4th. So, if everybody takes a minute to take a look at the December 4th meeting minutes, if it goes out of the way.
I can't vote on these. I was absent.
You can still vote on them.
Let's still look at meeting minutes.
You watched on YouTube.
You can still read them. Remember, you read, you were there, you watched it on TV.
That's right. I did watch it on TV.
We were having popcorn.
We were having popcorn. That, though, this is the one I reviewed? Oh, yes, it is, isn't it?
You remember.
I get mixed up. I watched so many of these.
Amy, you never gave me the form to sign. It is. He signed one of them in the back of the October 30th.
October 30th?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
No, the form to sign it. Yeah, he signed. Where was the date? Not the 30th, maybe it was the other date. There's a form behind one of them.
He's got it right there.
I guess I did. No, Don. Don?
I don't hate.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of December 4th, 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Amy, you just put in our package a copy of the regular, the housing inventory update, basically for just for our review, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other business? Josie, anything else? Devin?
No.
Mike?
All set.
Joe?
All set.
I just have a question. I noticed on our scheduled meetings, February 19th, school vacation week, does that mean we're not having a meeting on February 19th? Or is that for informational purposes only?
It's for informational purposes. We haven't decided yet.
Okay.
We will let you know. Are you here during that week?
I make my plans according to the zoning board meetings.
Good answer. Good answer. We will alert you as early as possible so you can make plans. And without further ado, do I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for December 18th at 9:40 p.m.? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.